I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Yeah, I flip off tonight. Bro call.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
Rob Demmett.
Here.
Ted Metzger.
Present.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
Present.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Whitstein.
Here.
Before you start, I just want to say, I just wanted to thank you all for letting me adjust the meeting last Thursday so that I could attend. And I know it kind of caused some conflicts, but I really appreciate it. And it was a wonderful trip. So I thank you.
You're welcome. Got her all graduated.
Yeah, she's done.
Uh, the first item on the agenda is the minutes of the regular meeting from May 4. I didn't find anything. So someone want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Rick to approve the minutes of May 4, 23.
Second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero, thank you. First up is health business. They, uh, we got some information on this the last meeting. It is an additional appropriation for buildings, $7,500.
He spoke to you about it last week and he explained it. So then you guys gave a consensus for me to advertise it. So maybe he thought he didn't need to be here again.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Motion by Ron, seconded by?
Rob.
Rob. Discussion?
Ken, did you have something?
Did he get this already? Do you know?
No, he's, he's waiting on the menu to order.
Gotcha, gotcha. It's there.
Oh, really? He did?
I drove past it.
Okay, well, maybe.
Unless that's a different one sitting behind the building back there.
Okay, maybe he went ahead with the consensus and he just thought he could, you know.
Guess we should pay it.
Probably so.
I know.
Probably so.
Yeah, I'd have a hard time putting that on the trail.
All those in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Next is item number three, additional appropriation, Commissioner Business longevity.
Um, it's not longevity.
Excuse me.
It's not longevity.
Mark that out.
Definitely not longevity.
Okay, this is, uh, from the jail savings fund to pay contractual services. It'd be an additional appropriation of $666,122. And that's basically for the engineering plans.
Yes, I attached the invoices, um, from, where are they? RQAW. And, you know, specifies it was basically design and development. So.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Rob. Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I looked at the invoices. They didn't total anywhere near $666,122. I was just wondering, what's the additional?
I have a number, uh, for my administrators. Um, one of the pages that I provided for you does have the invoice of $75,000 from RQAW. But if you look under the contractual amount, the design and development part of it, which is what we're working on now, that total is $639,600. And then if you add to that the?
Baker Tilly.
The Baker Tilly for the $26,521, which will come to that total of the $666,121.33.
Okay, well, I didn't see that first invoice we're talking about.
Okay, yeah, so it's.
Yes, I would.
I'll make copy.
Will you?
I'm not sure that they got that.
I don't think I got that either.
Okay. I've got one more.
Well, this is the one that only says 75,000.
Okay, but if you look in that first column of the contract amount.
Okay. Design development says 639. Okay. Schematic design, 123.
Yeah. It's the 639 that we're focusing on.
See the, yeah, they did get that.
Okay.
It's in there, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I was looking for one that just had the 600 that you were talking about. Yeah. Okay. Any more discussion? Call for a motion then.
We've got a motion.
You got it already.
Already did? Okay. I'm sorry, there it is. All those in favor? Seven zero. And that motion by Brad and seconded by Rob.
You should have done a roll call or thrown you off.
Yep, yeah. Now next is handbook policy reimbursement transfers or corrections. All items listed have been checked for accuracy and can be voted under, under one motion. The additional appropriation, a health reimbursement that comes every month. It's, uh, I think from the cigarette tax. It's animal control, additional appropriation, $15,984. And vax care, $2,225. And those are reimbursements they received, but we have to appropriate them. And then a transfer in health from animal control to pound keeper, $5,500.
Just to clarify, that is not from the cigarette tax. That those fees come in animal control. Those are animal control fees. And then they turn around and put them back into the line item for expenses for animal control.
The fir- first two, are they still cigarette tax?
No, that's what I'm saying. They're not. It's animal control.
Okay. The vax care, is that?
The animal control also.
That's animal, animal, animal control, okay. So they used to get something that we reimbursed every month from cigarette tax. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Chris, seconded by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's seven zero, all of us. Thank you. And then we have the supplemental request here. Um, I, uh, when I got the notice that we were going to get the total amount, I asked Crystal to propose, and if it's all right with you all, we do it this way. There was $2,887,092 that was collected more than what was budgeted in the lit. So it's a lit supplemental distribution for 23. The county may use it in accordance to any statutory stipulations associated with the type of lit that it is eligible to receive. So I asked her to break this in half and put 50% in the jail fund and 50% in the rainy day fund. You can change this with a motion if you want. It just was a proposal that I thought kind of be wise to do since we're going to have some jail expenses upfront.
And this would also cover the land purchase, is what I was.
The land purchase, yes. So our motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And this is to approve Warwick County Council Resolution Number 2023 dash?
Three.
Three, oh, three. Resolution of the County Council of Warwick County, Indiana, authorizing a transfer from the county's local income tax fund to the rainy day fund and jail savings fund. The rainy day fund, $1,443,546. And the jail savings fund, $1,443,546,000. Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Under, uh, other business, uh, for the council, I wanted to preface something. First of all, um, Chris, you wanted to welcome some guests.
Yeah, I see in the back of the room there, which everybody's in the back room, but, um, against the wall there, we have, uh, Newburgh, uh, members here. Chris Wisher, the town attorney. And the net angel, Clark Treasurer. So I just wanted to welcome the guys. Thanks for coming. Um, yeah, if I was in grade school, I'd, the class, come on, come up there, please. Greg, isn't that your job?
Yeah. Well, uh, yeah, if you wanted to.
Anyway, thanks for coming. We very appreciate it very much. Oh, and the air conditioning is pretty nice.
Yes, earlier today it wasn't working.
It's still.
Nice job.
To, to preface, preface what comes next, it's a little bit of a discussion on the PSL IT. And, uh, we, there was a problem, uh, this is for everybody's information, with the, the legals and the way it was advertised. Uh, it came from our attorney, a communication that went to a computer, the county council computer that was not working at the time. In fact, it was down three days. And so we did not get word to, um, inform the municipalities. So basically what we did that time when we adopted the two percent, uh, two tenths of a percent is null and void. Is that correct? Or we have to rescind it?
We don't have to rescind it.
Okay. So we're, we're considering some other things. Uh, we've considered paring that down to 0.15, 0.17, or going with the two. And I wanted to tell everybody that's here how this came about and why we even considered it. We're not trying to cut funds, but we're basically trying to preserve something that's going to have to happen one way or the other. Gibson County and Vigo County were forced to build a jail by federal standards. And they have, they, they tell you what contractors to award the bids to, and you have no control over how it's built, how much money it costs, and we would have to go to the taxpayers for that. And we would rather be in control of how to build our own jail. It works better that way. I was on the council 33 years ago when we built the one out here. And we did it to avoid the same reason. Cause a lot of people asked, well, that jail we had was only 15 years old. Why are you building a new one? And it has served us well for 33 years. So now we've got to look at what is inevitable because all the standards are changing. And if you have not been out to visit our jail to see what kind of shape it's in, you need to schedule with the sheriff a visit and just take a look at what it looks like and the trouble we're having replacing parts. It's basically obsolete. Its time is up. And, uh, we looked at renovation, the committee did, and the renovation would cost more than building a new one. So we're down to, do we want to choose to build our own jail or do we want to be forced to do it at someone else's prevalence? And so the council decided that we would rather do our own. That's one of the main reasons we passed the public service local option income tax was to set aside money for building a new jail on our own. At the time, the estimate came in before COVID, it was about 35, 37 million dollars. So we thought that the, uh, $2 million a year would be enough money over 25 years to pay for the thing. Well, COVID came and gone, and you know all know with COVID, the building supplies and wages went up. And so that has turned into anywhere from 52 to 57 million dollars now. So the $2 million is not enough to cover a payment. Our payments will be somewhere around 4.1 million dollars over a period of 22 or 23 years, whatever the law allows. So that's the position we found ourselves in and why we did this. Also to add to that, throw some more pepper on this, um, Senate Bill 78, if you're not familiar with that, would have given townships the same privilege as cities and towns municipalities have, where they would be given a certain amount of money according to the assessed valuation. The bigger you are, the more population, the more homes and more businesses you have, the more money you're going to get. That would have to come off just like cities and towns do first. It would be ripped off and set aside first. And when that is done, we couldn't have, we wouldn't have enough money to make payments on the jail. So we thought by setting aside, which was allowed by all the two tenths of a percent, to be able to make the 4.1 million a year payments, that, uh, that was a wise thing to do. At the time, we didn't know how much it was going to cost everybody. We've got the figures back now, and it's going to even cost the county over $3 million. We're not, I mean, that's what we're using to pay for extra officers we have now, extra patrol cars we have now, all the things that we have added in the county, extra, plus a whole new ambulance station and, uh, mani- manpower there. So it's a deal where we're trying to walk through this the best we can. And so, uh, one thought that came across to my mind is, we're all, you, the cities and towns, and the counties, going to go through a budgetary process. The normal time is, it starts in July and works its way through to October. And at that time would be a good time for all of us to consider what might happen with our budgets. This is my thought. Rather than slamming everybody with this all at once, having a meeting next week, having these choices before us and making a choice on a resolution as to what to do, that would mean a hardship from, it would start in October, I guess, when the hardships would start happening. There'd be less funds for everybody. Uh, if we put this off and kick the can down the road a little bit, giving us all time to think about and look at our budgets, what to do. So it's just my thoughts on it is, let's go a year and let's really watch for Senate Bill 78, only it will, it'll have another number next year. It may be a House bill next year. But it has come back like this the third year in a row, and it almost passed this year. And, uh, the lion's share basically would have gone to one township in the county, which is good for those people. And I'm happy that, I'd, I'd have nothing against them because of the largest township. But all the other townships would also get a, take off the top as well, leaving us with not much and you with not much to operate with. So this is the dilemma we're in. And we all basically serve at the desires of the state legislature. The state legislature can change anything at any moment as far as our funding. They're looking at even changing the growth factor. They can do that. And, you know, we can count on certain things that we get one year and it may not be there next year or the following year after that. So these are things to think about and consider. We've got a lot on our shoulders as a county council to consider. We don't want to put any more burdens on the people. There's such a thing also, I know Boonville has a, has a district, a fire district. That would solve a lot of the fire department problems if they would consider districts. And yes, that would put a tax obligation on the people that's making decisions for their districts or for that area. And just think about what we went through to get this PSL IT passed to begin with. It was like pulling teeth. It was tough. And it didn't work out totally like we thought it would because of the, the way things are happening. So if we pause for a little while, all of us, and give time to look at our budgets, I think that would be a wise thing to do. But right now, tonight, in our other council business, I would like the council to discuss this and us come up with something as to how we should move forward. Just my thoughts.
Well, um, jump in, I guess. Uh, my thought is, is that, uh, since Senate Bill 78 did not pass, we're not under the gun to try to protect that, that jail payment as much as we thought we probably were going to do.
This year.
This year, yes. It could change next year. Um, so I, I like your idea of just, uh, tabling it, um, deal with it, uh, sometime after budgets, um, next year, whatever it is, whatever you're, you know, you're suggesting there. Um, I would, I would, I like that idea. Just leave it like it was and we'll look at it when it comes back up.
Okay, so you would be canceling the meeting next Tuesday then?
Yes. Yes. And basically, we would table, if somebody wanted to make the motion to table, this particular item, the, uh, segmenting of the PSL IT and making the change, we would be tabling that until after the budgetary season.
So like October, the, I mean, I'm just trying to think of.
It would. Let me find those dates again.
Um, or November, uh, you know, I just, or do you want to wait and tell me when you're going to bring it up? I'm, I'm just wanting to clarify what we need.
Yeah, I know. I'm looking for the dates. I've got an email, here they are. If adopted before September 1st, effective date is October 1 of the current year. If, uh, if adopted after September 1, but before October 31st, the effective date is January 1. If adopted between November 1 and December 31st, effective date is October 1 of the next year. So we really are probably not looking at doing anything until October of '25, as far as it, it's being effective.
So, yeah, but.
Yeah, '24, excuse me, October '24, excuse me. So, you know, we, anytime before the end of the year, and if we don't pass it by anytime before the end of the year, we, anytime before September 1 of '24, to make it, make it come in effect on 25, January.
Okay, how about I do this? At the, on the October meeting, under other business, I just put, discuss setting a meeting for public safety LIT. Not meeting on at that meeting, but just so you guys can, just freshen your minds. Do you want to talk about it yet? Do you want me to send anything out for a meeting? And we'll go from there. I mean, you can push it again, but is that okay?
So here's. Did you, did you say before October 31st, or?
No, I said, just bring it up at the October meeting. Do you want me to schedule a public safety meeting on an ordinance, you know? And if so, then it gives us time to advertise it properly.
Would that be a hearing, the time for the hearing?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it would be you telling me, do you want to have a hearing? And when do you want to have a hearing?
Well, I don't think we're ready to tell you we're ready to have a hearing if we table this.
No, that's what I'm saying. I, at the October meeting, I would ask you.
To open discussion.
Open discussion. Do you want to now have a hearing sometime, or do you not?
Uh, personally, me, I feel like we shouldn't schedule a hearing yet until we decide.
But she's not wanting to schedule a hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
So what, all she's wanting to do.
Schedule a regular.
Is just, is just say, hey.
Other business.
Starting at the, on October, what, the first Wednesday or?
First Thursday.
Whatever, okay. Yeah, but the first Thursday of the month, we're going to put this on the agenda. That we're just going to say, hey, we're going to now just open conversations about it.
Do you want?
Public hearing or anything else. But then we'll say, okay, well, then we're going to start talking about it next November. Then we'll set a public hearing. At least, I'm not trying to speak for you.
Right, yes.
All right, so it's a public discussion of it, is what it is.
Yeah, just, just me asking you to keep it fresh.
Do that.
Do you guys want to proceed with this? Or do you want to just push it a little further? That's it.
So here, here's my other thought. As we go into these budget discussions though, a- as we go into the budget discussions, if we don't keep this item like as an asterix as we're going through and discussing things, where we can make changes, I think we're, you know, if we just fly through the budget and don't even think about this at all, and then.
I get that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, cause I just.
There'll be notes, and we will go through that to show you, this is where we are. This is how much cash you have, and this is what we need to cut, yes.
And we'll get an estimate as to how much. So what we don't know is, income generally goes up every year. Unless something bad happens, it's going to continue to go up because we're, our county's growing. And at that, uh, September meeting, probably we'll know a little bit about what the income has grown, whether it's going to be 4%, 5% or 7%.
So, Ron, from your experience, when could a bill start down the road?
It can start today. I mean, as far as starting.
Like the vote?
No, no, there's a short session next year.
Okay.
Uh, so it's, in my opinion, unless they're really, I mean, it did pass the House, but there was some issues there. So they're going to be working on it all summer, basically, and being ready and get what, what issues they have put to bed, if they can, and then fly through it. It'll probably pass the House again quickly, but it's a short session. So you only get so many bills and, uh, to file. So that, there's even a possibility if they're not real comfortable with it, they won't file it. Cause it won't get a hearing, because there's, there's just no time.
So you live in like March, April?
Of next year?
No.
Oh, no.
We need to be watching.
That's going to be older by then.
I, I just couldn't, I couldn't remember if you mind to file those bills?
There's, well, yeah, the deadlines, it's usually the second week of, of, uh.
January?
When it starts, uh, whenever session starts. You've got about two weeks to file. You can file ahead of time, work with, and to have that ready, but it won't be basically filed. But they'll, they will work with each other to get, if they really want it, they'll be working on it right now. So the author of the bill will work with the Senate to get.
Come February, we would actually know, hey, it's not been filed, or it has been.
Well, yeah, it's second week of January, you know?
Second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, probably second, if it's been filed or not. Either way, and then it'll be quick. If they get a hea- if it gets a hearing, I mean, you know, you don't know what is going to happen in the Senate. Uh, this same guy may not have liked it to begin with, and he's not going to hear it in a short session.
So let's say, let's say they do pass it, when, can they put an effective date of like July 1 or?
No, yeah, normally they will put an effective date July 1st, unless they want to put it off for some reason, or unless they want to put it in effect immediately.
Oh, good God.
They can do that. But then the governor's got to, you got to get the governor to sign that too. You got to have a really good reason to do that. So it's emergency type things.
So we would honestly want to have at least a pretty good idea where we're at by the end of the year.
Correct.
That's what I.
Correct.
And I would say we can, we can find that out, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll know what's going on with it.
Other discussion on this?
So a reminder, in the September meeting?
Yeah.
Would not be too early for me, I don't think.
Okay, I mean, I can, yeah, at the end of the visit, just say, you know, have you thought anymore? Are you, are you wanting to?
All the information with that September meeting?
Well, it'll be close. It, you know, maybe such a thing, we bring it up in September and say, no, we don't have everything together.
Okay.
Let's bring it up again in October and then.
Or schedule for early October.
You know, so then, you know, you can direct me.
Usually by the end of September, we have the information on how much the income has grown.
Yeah.
I believe, I have this all on my calendar in my office, but I, I want to say it is by the end of September. It might even be by the end of August.
Budget for public service.
Right, right. It might be the end of August.
If it grows, that's great because that leaves a little bit more.
Well, and, you know, that's the thing, I think, for, for municipalities, like, they can look and see, okay, it grew, but let's not rely on that.
Yeah.
You know?
It changes year to year.
Because in case they do have to do something, you haven't relied on all this growth, right? Which is what I do when I budget for you guys. You know, I, I estimate really low and I don't rely on this huge increase. So it's just, just a thought. I mean, you know, budget accordingly, keeping this in mind that this may end up having to happen. I hope it doesn't.
Is there a little outline or something we can send to the towns and townships to give a simple explanation of kind of like what they need to be looking for? I know they need to be looking for next year's budget, but how this is going to happen?
That's what they'll supply. They've, they've given us.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, they've, they've given us some more detail than others to what their projections are in the past. So I think we could just kind of put that out there again, just to, you know, just so they've got their ducks on the road, which I think they're already doing because they, last year when they came forward, they had a lot of, had some information.
Right.
So I think, do we just need to tape then, just?
Can I ask the audience a question? Can I do that? Is this on Newburgh's kid radar? Okay, I think we're covered, guys. Imagine all of the, all of the towns are attuned to this.
Right.
So we just need to motion to cancel next week's meeting?
Need a motion to table first and then cancel the meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion to. Okay, I'll make a motion to table the meeting scheduled for next Thursday, Wednesday, the thirteenth?
Table doing anything, any changes to the PSLIT until after budgetary?
Yes, that sounds good. Is that a motion, Greg?
I'll write it down that way. Table no changes until after budgetary changes.
And I just want to be clear, since they're in the audience, and I mean, maybe some people are watching, but you will not do anything until there's another public hearing set and advertisements are sent out to, to the municipality, so that everybody knows when it's going to be brought forward. Correct?
Correct, and let's be more specific in our motion, if we're going to do a motion to table to the October meeting. The discussion of the lit ordinance.
October meeting.
But it's not a public hearing. Right.
That's why I said discussion of the lit ordinance.
Right.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to table the meeting to discuss the lit ordinance, the public safety lit ordinance scheduled for next.
To.
To discuss the lit ordinance.
To discuss the lit ordinance. Until.
I know, that's what I'm waiting to hear, September or October, September or October.
I think Brad was going to cancel the meeting, were you? Were you switching motion?
Now that would follow, we, we'd do that separate.
Sorry, I thought you switched to the second.
The motion on the floor is to table the discussion on the lit ordinance until the either October or September meeting. So, Brad, I think it was your motion, was it October?
Yeah, let's, let's table at least until October with a September reminder. But we'll just put it on the agenda.
For the October.
October or December?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, it's a motion by Brad.
I second.
Second by Rick. To table discussion of the lit ordinance until the October meeting.
Correct.
Any more discussion?
And then also, do you want to add in that motion to cancel the meeting on Tuesday?
Motion on the floor.
Yeah, let's go this and then do a second motion, is what I think.
Okay.
Okay, no discussion, all, all those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, that one is seven zero. And now a motion to cancel the meeting next week.
Motion to cancel a meeting next week.
Second. That was Ron.
Ron.
Cancel the June thirteen public hearing meeting on public safety lit. Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor? It's seven zero. Any other council business to come before us, or other business, how about the sign-in sheet? Okay. Motion by Rick to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted, all those in favor, seven zero.